Don't be afraid of today to show for today. So I'm going to go through the email system. I don't know, whatever.
Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, September 24th, 2024. This proceeding is being broadcast on channel 35. The exact broadcast times can be found by contacting channel 35. Board of Water and Power Commissioners, please stay present for roll call. Commissioner Narit Katz?
Present.
President Richard Katz?
Present.
Commissioner Lehrer?
Vice President McGraw?
Present.
Commissioner Pender?
Present.
For board members, a quorum is present. Mr. President?
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome everybody to this meeting of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. Let's see, I want to first, we're going to defer item N5 to the next meeting. Welcome Jennifer Gregg here today, representing City Attorney's Office. Ben's out of the office today, so welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Did he tell you this was an especially difficult meeting? That's why he's not coming today?
I'm ready.
Okay, got a couple recusing for Ms. Pender when we get to N7 and 8.
Thank you. And by the way, Commissioner Lehrer is the old official?
I'm sorry?
She's announcing my presence.
Okay, I noticed that. Thank you. And let's get started. Why did we defer that? Roll call. Any comments? Anybody, any commissioners want to say before we get started? Jump into it?
Pretty sure I have something that I forgot to write down, so maybe it'll come to you.
That was for you.
Probably not, but no. It's one of those Tuesdays. General public comment, please?
Public comment is now open at this time. Speakers, please be mindful that you have two minutes to address the board. There are three public commenters at this time. The first speaker is Evelyn Wendell, who will be followed by Armando Camarena.
When I called, they said I could speak for five minutes. I wonder if that's possible. I called the secretary? No? Because I did write a speech that is four minutes and 30 seconds.
Edit it quickly, please.
On me?
Edit it, please edit it quickly.
I can't read it?
Well, you're using a good part of your time just going back and forth on it.
So my name is Evelyn Wendell, and for 16 years, I've been the forefront of raising awareness of public drinking water fountains and hydration stations as a direct solution to reducing single-use plastic waste and improving public health while being a champion for publicly-supplied drinking water provided by you all here. I developed the first drinking fountain finder app in the world and founded wetap.org in 2008. The wetap app maps and shares information about drinking fountain locations and their status. It can now be customized for you and other utilities to include water quality reports, special links, education, report, maintenance issues back to you, which is one of our biggest challenges. Wetap was the first community partner ever for the Drinking Water Quality Division at LADWP. I successfully advocated to LAUSD when Mark Hoeveter was chief of facilities, and their board created their, passed their Drinking Water Quality Initiative, and they've invested over $50 million to ensure their units are maintained at high standards. I worked with Mayor Garcetti and his administration and your administration to both implement and celebrate tap water day here in Los Angeles, which was initiated in 2015. Let's see, I'm editing. Tap Water Day 2024 was celebrated by MWD and their agencies. This was the first time in their history that MWD attempted to collectively share information about drinking water. For Tap Water Day 2024, 18 of their agencies, including LADWP, shared positive and practical information about public drinking water. You can see, you can still see our social media posts on all the websites and social media pages.
Very cool.
Under the water section, as you can see, wetap was included in the sustainability plan for the city of LA, which prioritized drinking fountains, which hadn't been done in decades. The mayor committed 200 units, which led to your hydration station program at LADWP. Let's see, in 2018, during a Tap Water Day celebration in front of this building, in a sea of press, I asked Marty if we could achieve 2028 for 2028.
Excuse me, Ms. Wendell? I apologize, but your allotment has expired.
Okay.
Go ahead and finish what you were saying.
Thank you. 2028 is our initiative to ensure the city of LA has at least 2,000 functioning, clean, accessible drinking fountain units for the Olympics, allowing us to promote and celebrate them. Wetap is trying to coordinate this without funding in place with Wreckin' Parks, LA City, LA County Fire Departments, libraries, LAUSD, Metro, and of course, all of you. We can do this. We can really outshine Paris. I also chair the Safe to Drink Work Group for the state of California. It's Monitoring Council, which is the only website focused on drinking water for the state of California, and it's on the website of the state water board members. I've been working closely with your Water Quality Division throughout the years as people have come and gone. You know, I want to be able to keep working closely with all of you as your foot soldier. Wetap needs your support and collaboration to continue. This is a big endeavor, and it has been and it is a huge endeavor. I can keep going, but...
Is there a proposal before LA 28 or?
Well, I've submitted some, a proposal for the wetap app, which is a communication tool that Metro and LA Wreckin' Parks and LAUSD, I mean, everybody wants it and can use it when it becomes customized, and it really can become a valuable tool for, to communicate with customers, which you know is always kind of a challenging, you know? But, and, you know, modern, you know, kids are going to be your future customers, right? And so they don't really read water quality reports, but they look on their phone every day, and we can make this a fun, you know, fun project. So there's a lot of, you know, projects underway, and I'd love to speak with all of you. Thank you for your time. I appreciate speaking with you and Narit and all, so I look forward to collaborating, continuing the collaboration. Thank you very much.
Do we need a nap?
We have some of our stations on, and actually, I've been aware of Evelyn's work for decades. She's really been quite a leader in this space, so I do want to thank you for coming and elevating this important topic, and I may have mentioned to you, I'm serving as the co-chair for LA 28 Sustainability Working Group, so we can connect on that. I love the vision for 2028 for 2028, and thank you for bringing that forward.
To do this, it's really about prioritizing the fountains. I mean, I just had a meeting with Wreckin' Parks Sustainability Chief yesterday, and they are doing a new inventory, even though it sort of had been done and sort of lost, but they're prioritizing their fountains, and Metro is getting an inventory which they have never had, and LA Library, you know, they're like eager to promote educational materials, of course, so it's really a coordinated effort, you know, within the city, as you know.
No, that sounds great. One thing I would suggest, might target a little bit on 2026 also.
Yes, that's our test.
A couple of people coming here for beef, so...
Yeah, for sure. That's the test spot, so we have to get it all in place so that we can do it, you know, practice for that, and that way we can really shine for the Olympics. We can do this.
Appreciate it. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. I appreciate all of you tremendously. I'm your foot soldier, again. I'm out there speaking truth about how excellent the water, you know, drinking water throughout the city is, and unfortunately, a lot of people do not hear this message.
No, and the one thing we're sure is that the water coming out of those taps meets or exceeds all the federal standards and local standards, and that, you know, no lead, et cetera, it's good water.
100%, and we just have to, you know, keep talking about it, because people aren't aware of the Safe Drinking Water Act and all the work that goes on behind the scenes. So, you know, thank you for your service, your public service, and I look forward to speaking with all of you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Evelyn.
Thank you.
Okay.
The next speaker is Armando Camarena, who will be followed by Ashok Talukdar.
Good morning. I have a handout for each one of you.
Thanks.
Thank you. I should have given it to you.
Over six months ago, I came before to ask why the current auction contract has not gone out to bid in over 10 years. I came away with the understanding that the RFP should soon be out. Since it has not come out, I would like you to allow us to conduct your auctions now in the same manner as J.J. Kane. We can piggyback on the city of LA contract. I'm also here to give you a picture of our new state-of-the-art auction facility located in Coaten, California. This is how an auction company should display their inventory for auction. It's not just onsite anymore, it's online. So we have customers across the United States, Canada, Mexico, Europe, and Africa. Prior to today, I also given you the information on J.J. Kane Auction Company, your current supplier located in Birmingham, Alabama. This handout you have lists all the companies owned by Altech Industries, and the last page, J.J. Kane Auction Company. You may wonder why you use this auction company, or why they want your business. That's because they have other companies that buy the equipment from the auction, turn around and sell it through another auction buyer who sells it back to Newco. Newco is the one that refurbishes the aerial trucks and equipment and sells it again. That's called double dipping. That's all I have to say. I just wish that we could piggyback on the contract. There's no rule, there's no regulation. Our customer base includes Southern California Edison, Sempra Energy, San Diego Gas and Electric, and many cities and counties throughout California. Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation, particularly the comments about double dipping are something that would concern us.
We will review.
See what you find out. I'm sorry, Narit?
I just said we will review. Thanks for the...
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Joe, is this under your shop or?
It's under mine. Right here, President Katz. So we are working on a solicitation, just going through the process internally, so we'll go out competitively.
Any idea of timeframe or?
I would say probably within the next month and a half, two months.
Okay.
Yeah, if it doesn't get done, let me know, and you can piggyback on our contract.
All right, I appreciate your offer. That's very generous.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thanks, John. Appreciate it. I couldn't hear, I heard a voice but couldn't see you.
I tried to stay behind the scenes.
Yeah. All right.
The next speaker is Ashok Talukdar.
Hi, good morning. Me on the podium again. For a change, I'm not going to talk about the Barclay today, because I think we've kind of beat that horse dead. I do have another problem, but before that, I want to thank Aram for meeting with me and meeting with our team, and I really wanted also thank you for the continued dialogue and the cooperation we're getting, and for the record, I don't drink bottled water, I only drink tap water in LA, so that's a little kudos to you. We have a problem. We approached you very early about our Angel Tower Adaptive Reuse Project. This is the gorgeous Insurance Exchange Building on Ninth Street, which we are going to convert from commercial to residential, 250-plus units, mixed commercial, there'll be a couple of floors of commercial used at the bottom two floors. But we took the design suggestions for the customer station that you gave us, and we carried them through to 100% construction documents, and now we are finding that that design will require a million-dollar, three, maybe two-year-long line extension project, or we have to go back to the design board and redesign the customer station. Unfortunately, this is a 100% affordable housing project. There is no pot of gold at the end of this rainbow. We don't have a very high margin on these things. If we are lucky, after two years, we might break even and hopefully demonstrate that this is a sustainable model for doing affordable housing, and these are 100% low-income and very low-income housing. So we have a challenge. We don't have the budget, the time, or the bandwidth to take on an expensive redesign or to take on a line extension, and even if we miraculously found a million dollars, which we can't, three years is a long time. That's 253 lives that could be accommodated if we could do this sooner. So we do desperately need your help to find a solution to this, and we're willing and ready to work with you. Aram, thank you for agreeing to meet with us on a week, on a regular basis. These dialogues are very important. I hope we will continue that, but this is kind of now a critical situation that we need your assistance with. So I, again, my request, please think about what we can do here. Thank you very much.
Mr. Kumar, is that an ED1 project?
No, this is not an ED1 project, sorry.
Because it's mixed residential, commercial, so it's not 100% affordable.
This is, it's 100% affordable for the residential part.
The residential part.
Yeah, but commercial part is just going to be, you know, whatever we can find by the way of commercial tenants. It's not an ED1 project because there are a couple of things. It has a, it's a historic building, so there is a historical, cultural, historic and cultural review that is required, which makes it ineligible to be an ED1 project, even though there, I am told, there is a, there's an element of the entitlements that is going to require this building to enter into an affordability covenant.
Thank you. Thanks for that verification.
Public comment is now closed.
All right, thank you. All right, moving along.
Yes, okay. Well, good morning, President Katz and Commissioners. Let's start with Hispanic Heritage Month. We just started Hispanic Heritage Month. It's very special in LA, because LA is about 48.5% Hispanic. It's also my descendancy, so it's double warming for me, and so there's a lot of Hispanic Heritage Month celebrations going on around the city, but also in LADWP, we have several events that our employees can participate on. One that I'm really happy to be part of is we're going to celebrate the 50th anniversary of the Society of Hispanic Professional Engineers in Anaheim, and if you might not know, that association started in LA. So we are celebrating, and I happen to be the keynote speaker for that event. It celebrates LA as being the founding city of the Society of Hispanic Professional Engineers.
Why are we celebrating LA and Anaheim, though?
Yeah.
No, I understand.
At least we got, we got the keynote speaking role, right, for LADWP?
Exactly.
And so I'm happy to highlight that it started in LA, even though I'll be sitting in Anaheim when I'm doing so. Last week, I also participated in the U2030 Spark Meeting in Nashville, Tennessee. This is an interesting association that's really bringing together all the utilities that are trying to change into a clean energy transition for a greener future. Last year, I was honored as the Woman Who Spark winner, and this year, I was the emcee for that ceremony, and it was amazing to see so many women that are leading the clean energy transition across all utilities in the US. It was a well-attended event, but it was also very intimate for the utilities to have the critical discussions we have to have to solve for common problems across the nation. I also want to give you an update on the Easy Save Program enrollment. In 2020, we had about 113,000 customers, but we have ramped up communications and marketing campaigns, and that has increased by about 40%. So now we have approximately 159,000 customers currently enrolled in the program, and this is really important for our disadvantaged communities, our low-income communities. We also have lifeline programs for customers that are age 62 or older that have a disability. We have level pay program that allows our customers to levelize their payments, so they know how to budget for their utility bills, and then we have payment agreements that are very effective for our customers to pay their balance, especially those that were acquired during COVID pandemic, and we're very generous with the terms of that, very, very generous. And also, we've been doing the Cool LA program in our disadvantaged communities, and we have been enrolling a lot of our customers through those programs, and that has been very effective at 600-plus customers every time we go into an event. Also, last week, we had the Town Hall event that I do every month, and we talked about our power heat event. Our power team, Dave Hanson, was there talking about what we learned, what happened, and we shared with the whole company, so they were part of that discussion. And then we had a really cool project, the Tillman Filtration Facility, that has an amazing video, by the way. We really enjoyed that presentation, and I think our employees are really getting excited about the things that we're doing, because we can see it and we can touch it, and it's here to stay, right? So that has been really effective. And then I think Clean Air Day is coming up. We've been celebrating a lot about this, but we want to make sure that we encourage our employees to participate on Clean Air Day on October 2nd, and some recommendations is eating vegan or vegetarian, planting trees or gardens, composting, walking, biking, or scootering to local destinations and tagging Clean Air Day on social media. We had an event in one of our districts, and we have another one coming up at Central District Headquarters, and we had a lot of representatives in those events. So we're engaging and enlisting our employees on the clean energy transition and the importance of what we're doing. And lastly, more executive appointments and changes into our executive leadership. So first, I want to congratulate Joe Romalo, who is officially a Chief Customer Officer for the company, also in top of being the Communications Officer and the Strategy Officer. George Raphael has been now appointed as Director of Corporate Performance Reporting directly to me to help support our metrics, key performance metrics that tie to our strategic plan, and making sure that everybody has the same common operating picture to ensure that we're moving in the right direction. And then Estella Timman has been named the interim Director of Customer Service, taking over George Raphael's position. And lastly, but not last, Greg Reed was recently appointed Director of Wets, our Water Engineering Technical Services Team. He's going back home to his water roots, and we're really happy to have him. He's replacing Evelyn since Evelyn is now my Chief of Staff for Water. So those are my updates.
Great. Also want to thank you and the senior leadership for two mornings of action after action reports coming out of the heat experience. I was pleased to sit down on those, and it was quite interesting, and I think to listen to everybody talk about what went right and what could go better is very useful, but I thought it was a very good discussion and a lot of important comments coming out of it, so thank you for doing that and standing that up, which was a first for around here, as I understand.
Yeah, we had very honest and transparent conversations, and now we have a huge plan. I saw it yesterday. The team is moving into action and assigning point of context and timelines and to make sure that we complete some of those items. We have immediate things we can do, short-term things, and then long-term things that need project plans and project managers, and we're working diligently to get that going, and it involves everybody, and the response, it was not just the power organization, which was at a first, right? So.
Very cool. Geez, have a quick question on Easy Pay, and this might be a question for you, Joe, too. Those 150, 160,000 customers that we have enrolled, is that a percentage of a goal that we're trying to hit, or is it based on a projected need that we can understand statistically from our customer base, or is that just, we love growth? We had a goal of exceeding 50,000 additional. And so we're still working toward that, we're very close to it. We will continue to increase that. We know that the need is significant. I don't have at my fingertips the statistics on qualified individuals who would otherwise qualify, but I can get that for you if you'd like. Yeah, I'd be curious to see sort of where the trajectory of that goal is headed in terms of our sort of community equity initiatives, you know, if we know the qualified percentage of the population of our customer base that, you know, in theory, belong in this program, you know, how are we tracking toward that? And I think, I mean, huge kudos on the communications efforts. I mean, in the year and some months that I've been here, you know, seeing the way you've been redoing our, you know, radio and bus strategy and some other things to penetrate these communities better with some of these messages around Cool LA and Easy Save, I think, you know, seeing 40K for four years is really impressive, and I just, I'd love to know where you want to take it. Okay, thank you.
I think we're very conscious about affordability, too, and our disadvantaged communities in LA are 54% of our population, so that's something that's definitely for here to stay and support our communities in this clean energy transition.
And historically, the populations that could benefit the most are the ones who receive, if you, in a general sense, the communications about it or the information about it. So what's happening through Joe's shop and through the whole department to reach out to those communities is more important than ever, because the people who really need it actively, seriously need it, and we need to get the information to them. And also, it's not enough, and that's why I think a lot of the outreach programs that the department's doing are so important, it's not enough just to send folks the information. We actually have to make it much easier for people to sign up, whether it's at community events or whatever it may be, where, you know, working with the council offices, whatever we can do to have our people out there helping people sign up for it.
Yeah, one of the things I wanted to add is that we have held Customer Service Saturdays regularly, and we've been ramping those up. They're very popular, and it's a place where we actively enroll customers in those programs as well as promote things like the Cool LA AC giveaways. So part of it is the discount isn't that generous. If it was more generous, more people, it would be easier to market it, so we're trying to do things like pair it with Cool LA, make you eligible for more things if you're a part of the program, so trying to get real creative with the outreach and the marketing of it, in addition to just hands-on events that we want to do more of. You bring up a really interesting point about the discount not being that generous, then. I imagine there's some aspect of that that we don't have control over and some aspect that we do. Is that a conversation we need to be having at the board level? Yeah, that's one that I know it previously had when discussing things like charter changes and discussions with that process, so it's definitely the low-income and lifeline rates are something that are really in need of attention there. Yeah. Thanks.
We had a report on this earlier in the year, and we noted that since increasing the discount, the discount hasn't changed since 2008, because it couldn't be inflation-adjusted using rate revenue. The DWP sends nearly $1 billion down the hill. We were suggesting that we ask them to send about $30 million a year back to allow inflation adjusting of this. We offered this into the budget process, and that received the treatment that we expected in silence.
So we didn't get any back?
Not yet.
We're, so they didn't take more?
But I ask about it from time to time.
Appreciate you doing that. We all need to.
And we are constantly talking about creative ways of finding more funding for low-income programs, especially for water and power, but there's a lot of federal money, too, that we can tap into, that we're looking into as well, because that's not tied to our rates.
Right. But we need to take as much advantage of that as we can. I have a sense, just without getting too political about it, what happens on November 5th will have a lot to do with whether that kind of money's available or not available on a going-forward basis.
Correct.
And if folks can't figure out which is the better person for that, they probably shouldn't be voting, but that's a different story. No, but it is something we have to be very conscious of, and, you know, depending on what happens on the 5th, we may want to get any requests for federal money in really quickly and pursue it aggressively, but we need to be more creative about tapping into those opportunities.
Oh, hell.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's going to be an interesting year. Any other comments on what we're commenting on? No, okay, we've got Repair Advocate, Fred, you're up. And still here, and thank you.
Yes. The two items of note are the first steps in financing for water and power in seven and eight, and there's a balancing act going on here. It is not going at too high a debt level, because that reduces our ability to respond to emergency events of a large magnitude, and on the other hand, to support our capital plans, we need more money. So that involves the city's least-favored activity, possibly increasing rates.
Debt service on bonds that... You're setting an offer to pick up that for us, huh? Not yet.
I think only in the 1920s, but they wanted it all back for the next century.
I think they've gotten it more, but anyhow, that's a different subject, a different conversation. Anything else, Fred?
That's it.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. Moving on, on item F. Nope, I just did item F. Item G. So for those items, let's see, we already deferred in...
Five, I think. And then seven and eight are recusal, so...
Yes.
Do you want me to put forward a motion for the rest? Motion to approve items one, two, three, four, six, nine, and 10 and 11.
Seconded.
Motion is second. Any objection to all members being recorded as aye votes?
No objections.
So that should be the order. Now, on item seven and eight.
What else?
You're going to limp off here for...
I'm limped because something's wrong with my leg.
Oh. Hope it feels better.
Tell everybody.
I still believe you, I still believe you kicked somebody, so, you know, it's going on.
All right. Motion to approve items seven and eight.
Okay, seconded by the Vice Chair.
Sure.
Seconded. Any objection to the rest of us all voting aye? That objection, that should be the order. Um, so that, that. We took in five, I figured. We did take in five. That was a correction that has to be made in that. Management reports by Commissioners.
Um...
Oh, sorry. No, no, no.
Oh, right, we have to... In terms of reports from Commissioners on committee activity, we did have our inaugural meeting of a new standing committee for the board on sustainability and climate resilience. This took place on September 11th. This will be a quarterly committee to ensure that the board is receiving more frequent regular reports on these critical topics. We had an excellent dialogue focused on the scope of this new committee and heard priorities from our CEO as well as other L.A. DWP leadership, and look forward to hearing how this, these critical issues are addressed in a cross-departmental way and really collaboratively across L.A. DWP. So more updates on that in the future. Commissioner Lehrer serves as the second commissioner on that committee.
Great.
Thanks.
Anybody else? All right, okay, thank you. We'll look forward to the reports. Thank you, Nuri. Um, let's see. Filed items, nets.
I need to approve the minutes.
Motion is second on the, on the September 10th minutes, without objection. All members voted as aye.
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 That's all you got? You good? Okay. Thank you. Neighborhood Council, Rex.
No neighborhood, um, community impact statements were filed.
Thank you.
It's time for an open...
New world record.
I know.
And we took care of.
I think you've set a record.
I'm sorry?
I think you've set a record, President Katz, in terms of the efficiency of this we have.
It's one of those days, you know? Some days we get lucky, but, um, we're now going to, going to close session. But, um, you will read us in.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The board shall now recess to close session. The board shall publicly report any action taken in closed session and the vote or abstention of every member present thereon in accordance with Section 54957.1 of the California Government Code.
Thank you. We will now return to closed session and then report out after that, the results of that session. Thank you all.